All right, good evening everybody. I'm gonna call our Board of Selectmen meeting for December 2nd to order. We're a bit late, it's 6:09 PM and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a few announcements tonight. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested, we say this every week, for anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also check our website for any additional events or notices at www.kingstonma.gov. Kingston's 300th anniversary celebration is coming up in 2026. In the Board of Materials is a list and date of all the upcoming events being held throughout 2026. We also just wanted to make an announcement and extend our condolences for longtime resident farmer and agricultural commissioner Barry Mathias who passed away this past week. Mr. Mathias served on the Agricultural Commission from 2006 through 2025, the Conservation Land Review Committee from 2006 through 2007, and the Earth Removal Bylaw Advisory Committee in 1991. So we extend our condolences to his family and friends. All right, at this point, were there any other announcements from any other Selectmen?
I received two letters of, well, I guess not letters of interest officially, but inquiries about Finance Committee, so.
Oh, good.
I keep talking about Finance Committee and more people will sign up.
Yep, and we've got a full audio.
Yes, I am. It's on, lights on. I'm just not loud enough. Never heard that before.
You weren't loud enough, that was it.
I guess.
What was I just gonna say? Something about Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, two letters of interest. I mean, budget season's about to begin. School, actually the school committee had a budget discussion yesterday, so this is a great time to join Finance Committee if you're interested in getting involved and digging into the budget.
And I say this every time we talk about volunteers, you don't have to be an expert. Finance Committee, it'd be great to understand some finance, but if you get involved, we really just need people who are gonna use common sense and deliberate and discuss and be open to ideas, offering ideas. You don't have to be an expert, but we have lots of committees and boards. Certainly, there's plenty of people here to help out and for most of these boards, we have employees who are professionals, who know what they're doing and they'll help guide anybody new who wants to help out. Plus, there's plenty of super friendly volunteers that we have in the town who've volunteered for decades and I'm sure any of them would be willing to help out as well. So, all right, at this point, Open Forum, is there anybody here who would like to speak at Open Forum?
I think she said it for the mic.
Yeah. Anybody for Open Forum, I don't think so.
Can anyone see, is there any hand raised on the other side of those? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So our first appointment is an approval of promotion of Police Sergeant Michael Gallo. Is there somebody who wanted to, yep, Lieutenant.
She's gonna come, whether you want her to or not. She's gonna go. Nope.
Good evening, I want to thank the Board first off for allowing us to do this. Today, we recognize Officer Mike Gallo as he takes his steps to into the well-earned rank of Sergeant. He joined the department in 2000. into the well-earned rank of Sergeant. He joined the department in 2015. He's constantly demonstrated professionalism and his unwavering commitment to service. Within the department, he enhances our capabilities by being a instructor of firearms, tasers, applied patrol procedures, RAD, and even more importantly, he started to shape the next generations of officers, not only in our community, but also other towns and cities. He was working at the MPTC as an academy instructor, and I would say it was about that time when he started doing that, saw a huge change in him and his outlook on policing in general, so. Officer Gallo, with your experience and judgment that have prepared you for this next step, we are confident you will serve the community integrity and the drive that you have defined in your career thus far. Congratulations, Sergeant Gallo. And with the Board's approval of the motion, we'll do the inaugural family pin. I'm hoping Remy does this.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Michael R. Gallo as the full-time sergeant for the town of Kingston. The effective date of the promotion to be Sunday, December 28, 2025.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
It's all set now, she's fine now.
Thank you, guys, we'll get out of here now.
All right. I'm just gonna give them a minute. Thank you. All right, next up, we have a presentation of the Kingston's 300th Anniversary Commemorative Book by Ken Brack.
That's a tough act to follow. Some of us would like a badge as well, maybe.
Right.
Hi. Ken Brack, a member, a proud member of the Kingston 300 Book Team, also Historical Commission member, and joined by Jan Guittaboni, who needs no introduction probably, she'll jump in in a moment, and Jim Farrell, our project editor. The third leading musketeer who starred this, Tom Vendetti, is just under the weather a little bit, he would be with us tonight, but. We are thrilled to be presenting this book, Tales of Jones River Village, Kingston's 300 Years. It's in concert part of the celebration that kicks off on January 1st, and so many events planned and things upcoming. It's been a labor of love, and in very short, it's a compelling new compilation of people and events over the three decades, and people will find that there's many ways to kinda enter the book, it's so engaging. There's 11 sections, and I know you can't really see this, but all of you, we, you know, and we hope those who are watching will flip through, there's combinations of short articles and also, you know, deeper historical texts. It's not, you know, it's not a dry old history, but there's historical items that have come to light that are fresh, and it's it's the story of the lifeblood of the town, really. It's not a dry history. There's a lot in the last 100 years. There's a section of the book called "A Century Within Memory," that's just part of it. There's a community and life that comes in today a bit. The book is story or narrative-driven. Families who've been here for generations, who established businesses, maybe grandparents or great-grandparents immigrated here. Their stories and many others, and a cast of characters. And I would like to just highlight visually, we feel that the book is very accessible in part because of the awesome photography and design. Some of the photography is represented here, as you can take a look, and hopefully, and local scene's gonna show some of that. The cover shot, in addition to our project photographer who's with us, Ed Newt, Jimmy Powell from the Watershed Association did some of the photography such as of the Jones River. Hope that all those images jump out to you and draw people in. We think that will happen. And I'll kinda leave it to Jan from there, but also just to point out, you know, we just got the books in, six days ago. We had a community launch on Saturday. Today, we're at the Senior Center, and it was terrific, people coming in to buy them. We have a kickoff event with the 300th Team on Thursday at 42nd Brew. Come down at 5 o'clock, so for a couple of hours, books and beer. They brewed a special Jones River Kolsch. If anybody knows Kolsch beer, I'm a fan, Dawn maybe, and others. No, no, just hope to see there. But that'll be fun to kick off with the 300th Team this coming weekend at Silver Bell's Fair. We'll be there with books, and also, there's a couple of other Saturdays, and we're putting this out here, that Saturday mornings at the Beale House as well. Also on the luminaries that night, there'll be books in the library, and we'll arrange some other events to help people pick them up, because people are asking. Word is out, but we wanted to continue. We want to share this with the community. Both people who are relative newbies like myself, who've grown to really appreciate the town, and, you know, it's an introduction to all kinds of stuff, and for those of you who've grown up here, and your parents did, so. So, we'll put it out there. With that, Jan.
I'm Jan Guittaboni, the town historian, and I've been here for a long, long while, as you can see. This is my hometown. By any means, we do not say that we three did all of the writing. We had over 150 volunteers who gave us their stories, and we kinda put them all together. We have over 700 photographs. They're not all new, and I have to put in a plug for the archives down at KPL, and the archivist who volunteered to have many, many photographs that we have on hand at the, one, some of our 10,000 photographs at the archives. It was amazing to me to see that all of these volunteer stories came together, and they, with no plan on our part, but they all came together and told the story of how this town developed, not from the very, very beginning, but as it has grown, and the commonplace, the feelings of how welcome everybody is and how they tend to help each other out and so forth. It was just amazing. We had a wonderful, excuse me, turnout on Saturday. There were many people that came back to Kingston from other towns, and all the way from, there were people here visiting for Thanksgiving, and they were here from Maryland and so forth. They summer here, and they wanted a book, and so they came to the event. Today was mostly people who had ordered or people who had heard about this great book as of Saturday, and we hope you have a chance to enjoy it too, and learn something maybe.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jim Farrell, and I've been a resident of Kingston since 1978, so I'm not a native, but I do consider it my adopted hometown, and it was a real pleasure for me to be associated with this effort to get this book put together. Just to amplify briefly on what Ken and Jan said, what makes this different, and we have read through the earlier histories that have been done, the most recent one by Doris Johnson in 1976, if I got my math right, for the 250th anniversary, and many of you in the room may maybe knew Doris, and the ones before that. What makes this one different, and those are all great, we think those are terrific histories, what made this one different is that it was told in many different voices. You don't have just one author. There are, as Ken and Jan mentioned, 150 people contributed in one way or another to this book. And it really, it was a book, not to paraphrase the Constitution, but of Kingston, about Kingston, and by Kingstonians. And it really, it really does define the character and the culture of the town. It's really, there's something for everyone in it. Going back to the early days of the settlers along the Jones River, to a lot of interesting profiles of people. Doris Johnson, we just mentioned, she was an avid publisher, newspaper person, and the person who wrote Major Bradford's Town 50 years ago, she's profiled in there. You'll read a story, Kingston may be the only town that we know of whoever had a person who lived through three centuries, but we have a story in there about a man named Ebenezer Cobb, who was born in 1694 and lived into the early 1800s. You'll see stories about neighborhoods, you'll find profiles of people. Literally, there is something for everyone in the book, and one, you know, we're really delighted to bring it to you, and we're happy to, if you have any questions, to take them for you. But thank you very much for listening to us, and we hope you'll enjoy the book. Thanks.
So I just wanna say, we got here early before our executive session, I was in the Selectmen's office and was thumbing through that book. It's absolutely stunning. I mean, the color, the vibrant colors, the way it's laid out, it really blew me away, and just going through, just thumbing through, there, how many pages are in that book?
372.
Yeah, there's a lot in that book. It was a lot more than what I had anticipated.
It was actually more than we anticipated. We thought it was gonna be 300, but we kept adding and adding and adding.
Well, I have four kids, I mean, I'm gonna get one for each of them. They were born and raised here in Kingston, so I know it'll be important to them as well. So, thank you guys so much for doing this. It's done a tremendous job.
So people will be able to buy the book on Thursday?
Yes.
And then if they don't live locally, where can they get it? Do you ship it? I know the answers to these questions, but I figured I would let you answer.
Yeah, we have a secure website, and we're shipping ourselves. It's with the GiveButter platform, and it's working, you know, they're heavy books, they're a little over four pounds, so shipping's unfortunately not inexpensive, but.
But you can ship it, so those folks who grew up here but then maybe moved away can go ahead and order a copy.
And the book is only $35, and we're really happy about that because the printing cost was more, but we've had some help in the background, and that's to help get it out.
It's beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, wonderful.
I already have mine.
One coffee through the chair for the Selectmen's office, and thanks.
Thank you so much, you did a great job.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
I'll see now, I'd like to start down there, you start. It's also these accompanying bookmarks, too, if anyone's interested. Well, this is my favorite meeting so far.
Yeah. It's all good. All right, the next item is a public hearing for discussion of street acceptance for Nobedear Circle. We have residents from Nobedear villages that brought forth a request for the town to accept Nobedear Circle as a town road. It was sent to Town Planner Val Massard for review. Val, did you wanna speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Valerie Massard, Town Planner. Yeah, I'm working on all of these different street acceptances that are before you, and so, like the others, I'm often the one that is contacted first to get the process started. Mr. Turner's been out and taken a look, and we don't see any immediate concerns with the roadway. So, you know, we would be looking to you to give us the guidance to take the next step in the road acceptance policies.
Before we open the, well, we should probably open the public hearing. So, would someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, I just have a quick question before we do open up for the public. Were there speed bumps in there on Nobedear? Do we have, I forget what you call them, but.
They do? Oh, they do, okay.
Yeah. Were those done in accordance with the town, do you know?
Well, this was a 40B, so the planning board was not involved, so I haven't learned more about the road yet.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay.
Sean, you don't happen to know the answer on that, do you? Because I know we had an issue on, yeah, Captain Jones.
Yeah, these are just temporary.
Oh, okay.
They're just temporary ones that you guys put out in the spring, and then you remove them before the winter.
Got it.
Yeah, we checked, we went, I went down and checked the other day after the tree trimming, and then what was it, last week or something, or just the other day, they were removed. Usually by December 1st, we ask them to be removed.
So.
We had a different roadway where they, the developer put in these speed humps and exactly. Okay.
So, question, if we accept it as a public road, are those allowed to stay there, or are they not allowed to have them?
That's a good question.
Okay.
We, I guess it would be up to them, but it's, it becomes a town road, then it becomes our liability for what's in the road.
Right.
So we could have that conversation about a speed table, that kind of thing, if that's where we're headed. But we haven't, like, say, we don't proceed with any of those discussions until after we know that there's an interest from the Selectmen to engage in those conversations.
Okay. All right, so the public hearing is open, so if there's anybody here from the public who wants to speak on this, please just make your way up to the podium, if anybody wants to speak. You don't have to.
I was gonna say, is there specific things you think that they should talk about? I mean, in prior public hearings, so folks have talked about the general benefit to the town, why why we think that the town meeting would approve the, making the private road a public way. Intention of the development, like, was it always the intent to become a public road? We know we have 154, I think, private roads in Kingston, I think that's what that document was that we got a few.
That sounds high.
It's a, it's an Excel sheet that we got, I'm pretty sure it had like over 150 non-public roads on it in Kingston, so it's.
Yeah, the spreadsheet does list all the public roads and all the unaccepted roads.
Yes, there's quite a few that are non-public roadways.
70 miles of public way and 35 to 40 miles of private ways. And then miles and miles of state road.
Of course.
Right. Okay, and just to clarify, what is the next step in the road acceptance policy? I know we voted the policy before, but it'd be good for the public to know what happens after this.
Yeah, to try to keep it simple, just do one step. That step would be for us to have these conversations about the speed bump, look at it with the fire, look at it with highway, look at it with the residents, talk about what we'd need to do if it were to become a public way, where we probably want to have something that's more permanent and decided, and how we would go about that, and what that might cost, that sort of thing.
Okay, and just for the public to know, because there could be people who are watching tonight or watch this later on recording, ultimately, it would go to, and correct me if I'm saying anything wrong, but it would go to town meeting for the town meeting to vote to support, to accept or not accept the roads.
Yep, you're right, there's a. Yep, you're right, there's a long winding road to get to there.
Right. And typically, the town would ask before the town adopts it, for instance, if there were a lot of repairs to be done to the road to bring it up to the town standards, the town has typically asked the road owners or residents or whoever owns the road to make those repairs, to bring it up to the town standard before the town takes it over, because at that point, it goes on to our list to, for ongoing, you know, repaving over the years, you know, however many years that is.
Our goal is to, so I'll dive in a little bit deeper, we would have that first initial discussion, go out and talk with you about what you think, talk to fire, talk to highway, and assess it, talk, come back with rough ideas of what that cost would be, and then it would be up to you to decide whether you're willing to, if there are costs, there may be none, but if there are, we would give you a rough idea of what the cost would be to do engineering work to design something that would fix that, and then you can decide then if you want to keep going, or whether you're like, no, we don't want to, you know, spend that money. Then we would, if we went ahead and went further along, then we would hire the engineer, do the work, and have those engineered plans with a real estimate of the cost, and again, say to you, now do you want to keep going, because the cost is going to be assessed to you. Whether you do it or whether we do it is something we can work out in terms of timing, but it's the design of what gets put there would be the important thing. And we've been working on a speed table on another subdivision for the same process, so we have some references we can use in terms of what that might cost, whether you want to do it or not, you know, there's a lot of conversation to be had. And then if you're comfortable with those costs and the cost it might be to improve those, then you tell us that you're ready to go before the town meeting.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Was there anybody online that wanted to speak during?
We can't see behind the scenes.
Yeah, I can't see. No, okay, and nobody here wanted?
Right, but we can't see if he's raising his hand, that's all.
And did anybody want to speak to this at all? It's okay if you don't.
It's just the beginning of the process anyway, so...
All right, I just want to make sure everyone feels comfortable that they can speak if they'd like to. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move the board of selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and any other motion?
I move the board of selectmen approve the request from Nobedear Villages to move to the next step within the road acceptance policy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right.
Off you go to the next step.
All right, the next item is a request from a resident to place stop signs at Old Mill Road, Longwood Circle, and Stone Bridge. Megan McCurtin called the office requesting installation of, I don't think it's two, I think it's three stop signs, at the intersections where Stone Bridge meets Old Mill and where Longwood meets Old Mill Road. Oh, I guess it is just two. So the price for the signs and post is $175. Is Megan here? Oh, did you want to introduce yourself and, yeah, yeah, right over there. So just state your name and your address, and then you can say whatever you have to say.
My name is Megan McCurtin. I live at 65 Old Mill Road, and on behalf of some residents and myself, we are looking to have some stop signs put on the intersections between Longwood and Old Mill and Stone Bridge and Old Mill. We've seen a lot of incidences where people coming onto Old Mill haven't stopped, so we've either had some near misses, or, and now there's like hesitation. When you're driving on Old Mill, you're worried that somebody's going to blow through and not stop. Can I just add one more thing? When I was asking my neighbors if anyone was in agreement with these stop signs, I actually got more feedback with yes, please, we'll support you with the stop signs, but they were also wondering if it might be possible to have something posted maybe at the entrances of Old Mill, like the caution children or a speed limit sign. It sounds like speed is actually more of a concern for the people in the neighborhood, and so I guess when asking about the stop signs, I thought I would bring that to the attention as well, that there are two concerns going on in the neighborhood.
So typically, we don't put stop signs in neighborhoods, so the highway department typically follows engineering-based standards for placing the stop signs in line with Massachusetts' manual on uniform traffic control devices. So those standards require stop signs be installed where there's traffic volume, accident data, intersection design shows safety needs, so if there's been accidents, that sort of thing. There are typically none in neighborhoods except, like in Newcombs Mill right next door, right down West Street.
Yep.
When you pull in there at that first intersection, there are stop signs, but that's a four-way intersection.
Yeah.
So the ones on Old Mill are not four-way. Then, what was I going to say? The one thing that I would worry about, and just to, as a disclaimer, I live in this neighborhood too, so it's fine, I can still, I don't have to recuse myself, I did find out about that. And then, and then our fire chief also lives in that neighborhood. Yeah, so the, we may want to start with a different approach, because one of the issues that we're going to have is, you know, occasionally we have people who are calling the police department about, you know, speeding in their neighborhood. We have a lot, a lot of issues that we've had on Main Street. One of the issues that we're going to face is if you do this for this neighborhood, then you're going to have other neighborhoods coming in saying they want stop signs and other things. So I totally agree, I mean, I think everybody wants a safe neighborhood, safe roads, for sure. We just may want to look at how best to handle this. I talked to the police chief a little bit, and Lieutenant, I don't know if you have any information, he mentioned something about monitoring, I forget what it's called, a JMA? There's something that they post on poles, but we don't have poles because all of our wires are underground, but we do have, there are trees in certain areas.
So there is a, we have a couple different avenues for, the JMA unit specifically is more, I would say, a specific traffic control device, whereas some of the other stuff like speed signs and stuff like that are more, like on a bigger scale, they don't really cut down on what size vehicles and things of that nature. We can see if we can put it up there, we might have to go on a private property, we'd have to speak to those owners and things of that nature, but...
There's an important reminder, too, so speed limits, we've been asked for speed limit signs in different parts of the town, or adjusting the speed limit, but there is a town-wide, at any of the points of entry into the town, it does say, you know, like Plimpton up near the railroad tracks and things like that, there are signs saying speed limit 25, it's very disconcerting because people think on a 45 mile an hour road that the speed limit turns 25, it's not, it's just saying that town-wide, we're 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. So neighborhoods like ours are, by definition, 20, 25, so, and I've been there for 25 years, so I didn't have any issues there for a long time, and there's a couple people who speed down Longwood Circle.
I've been there for five years, and I just haven't...
Oh, you have to be at the mic if you're talking, because the online can't hear you.
Hold on, Will.
Hold on, go ahead.
I've been, I've been there for five years, and I feel like there's been an uptick lately. And with, I have a child who's going to be driving soon, so maybe I'm even more sensitive to that, that I'm just watching the traffic, but there have been several times where I've almost been T-boned by somebody coming from Stonehedge onto Old Mill. So, I mean, in theory...
So like, if you're going that way, they're coming out?
If they're coming from Stone Bridge onto Old Mill, in theory, they should stop, but they don't. And so when you're on Old Mill, it's a straightaway, and in theory, you're trusting that the people will stop, and they don't. So it's happened to me three times in the past year, which is now why I hesitate as I drive up. I have a young child who's going to be driving soon, so I'm thinking for myself, and then also this child who, and so, yeah, I've noticed, it's been in the past year or so. I walk the neighborhood a lot now, and there's a lot of speeding, and I have a woman, one of our neighbors, who said she actually had to jump off the road because there was a specific vehicle who lives in the neighborhood who almost took her out around a corner. So, I mean, it's an amazing neighborhood to walk in, we have lots of kids, we have dogs, we have bikes, we have babies. There's, it's just, it's changed in the past year, so whether it's the stop signs, my thought process was that if we had some signage, at the very least, it's reminders to people that, like, we care, and we want people to be mindful of keeping the neighborhood safe. So, stop signs was my initial thought, but I have actually a lot of neighbors who were like, maybe we could post signs or children's signs at the entrances, so people know this isn't like the Wild West when they come in, and...
Is there a white line, like, at the end of the road that indicates that, oh, okay? I was just curious, I haven't been in that neighborhood.
No, but it's, it's very obvious that you're...
That it's a T-intersection, okay.
I mean, I will say that I see somebody speeding down my street all the time, and it... Is it a black Corvette? It is not. But, and this is probably in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
I would say in the past couple of years, it's been, yeah, go ahead, Lieutenant.
The JMA unit sounds great and everything, and it's a good tool for certain things. If it's enforcement-type of issue, no one's going to care if there's a JMA unit up there, and the information isn't going to do any good anyways. If there is an enforcement-type of action, or if you want more, you know, presence up there by the police, you're welcome to give me an email, we'll figure it out. I have other programs that has the median speeds, the top speeds, the low speeds, that extrapolate it out of the clouds and out of your vehicles and things like that. It's anonymous, so don't worry about it, I won't know that you're speeding on the highway or anything like that. But it comes down to, like, more of a true data, and just because we know people blew the stop sign at a certain time, it's not going to fix the problem unless there's a presence of, you know, of the police in there, so that's what I'm here for, that's what we get paid for, and more than happy to do it, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So, another silly question, but could we send letters from, you know, signed by the board of selectmen, police, fire, highway, whatever, to the neighborhood? I think there's 40 homes in there, but I mean, send a letter out saying, you guys need to start stopping at the end of these roads, and the speed limit is 25, kind of thing, and, you know, coming from the town...
Yeah, I mean, that's another option.
Because I think it's honestly, it...
But at the end of the day, it's going to be enforcing the neighborhood people, that you probably are living there or friends of the neighborhood people that are in and out of there, so...
Is there residential signage now, like, children at play, those kind of things, or no one has any?
And typically...
Well, I mean, I mean, from like the res, like, you know...
Sometimes you can put them in your, like, in front of your house.
It's not typically... Honestly, a lot of times when people put something like that up, because people aren't thinking, and sometimes it just, honestly, it just takes a reminder, that's why I was thinking even a letter might actually work, because it is a small neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's not like a huge neighborhood that people don't care, you know, like Route 27, we had people flying down from Pembroke hitting our high school doing 50, you know, and the speed limit's 25. Those people don't live there, they don't care. I mean, everybody in our neighborhood lives there and hopefully cares, it might just need a little smack in the face, like, hey, remember, you need to stop.
I didn't say that.
I think Al's being for traffic enforcement does that.
And as far as like stop sign violation enforcement, usually the, you know, we're doing on main roads, and if they're not stopping for an actual stop sign on a main road, I mean, yeah, we can spend the money and put one up on a side road, but I don't know if it's going to get the same effect as just having the presence up there and doing that.
I mean, if you have a general, if it's all the time, it's harder to throw someone over there, but if it's, if you see it generally at the same time of day or same days of the week, it may be easier for them to pop over there from time to time. It is a closed neighborhood, right? I mean, it's, it's really only the people that live there, they're not, no one's driving by, so, well, and...
Oh, yeah.
Well, hopefully, they're not speeding through your neighborhood.
They're at my house three times a day, so I mean...
So it is actually you.
It is actually you. It's not me, it's my wife and my daughter.
So, okay, I think at the end of the day, we understand there's an issue, hopefully that we can find a way, maybe working with the police to...
Yeah, just I'll forward my email over, and we'll get something, get something on it. All right?
Sounds good.
All right.
We've had lots of, for reference, we've had lots of requests for stop signs all over town for various reasons, and some of them, we were advised by the Old Colony Planning Council not to put in because it would actually be a liability to the town, because it changes the intersection, and there's visibility issues, so putting in a stop sign is seemingly a simple solution that is never as simple as it seems, never. It's always complicated.
But I think that, I think your first step is a good one, right, to have visual presence down there in traffic enforcement, and that's the way to give somebody a visual to slow down without you having to put out your sign. I mean, you can still do that, but...
But honestly, I feel like it's just a quick, I think, yeah, we need a reminder, because, again, I've been there for 25 years, I never was an issue until just the past couple of years, I would say. I mean, I'm not down on Old Mill, I'm on Longwood, but...
Get your kids out there with chalk, draw the white line in the road.
My kids are all grown up now, so...
Okay, anyone's kids.
They're 22 to 26, they're not doing the chalk, but they grew up there in that neighborhood, so...
The neighborhood kids.
Right.
So do we have, we don't have to do anything if we're not going to make up?
No, I mean, I think, I think what we do now, and Megan, you can, you know, feel free to reach out to me, my email, Eric Crone, I'm on the town website, so you can send me an email, but we can also reach out to the police department and see what they can do, and we'll figure out some way to improve this. All right, all right, thank you. All right, next item is approval of a one-day liquor license for Forty-Second Brew Company. They're requesting a one-day license for the winter market being held at Jones River Storage. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the request from Forty-Second Brew Company for the winter market on December 20th, 2025, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 26 Wapping Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that the same day as Luminary's?
Sorry, what?
Is that the same day as Luminary's? Does that impact? Yes, does that impact anything, or no? It's just right beforehand.
It wouldn't be anywhere near Wapping Road area.
Okay.
Road closures.
Yeah, so just keep that in mind, I guess. Right, towards corner of the road closure. I was just thinking about it being the same day approximately around a similar time, so just keeping that in mind.
Oh, yeah. All right, all right, next item, possible reconsideration of upgrade to the EV charging station. So after further discussions with the vendor provided the proposal, as well as our facilities manager and facilities assistant, they're working together to find the best fit for our community, ultimately, given this new information...
This is a request that came from me, that's why it says aye.
Yeah, so Kim would like the board to reconsider, I'm like, aye.
Right.
Would like to, the board to reconsider this vote, instead, vote not to move forward with the contract that we voted affirmatively on in the September 9th, 2025 meeting.
Right, so if you guys remember, on September 9th, we voted to move forward with a new vendor. More information has come up in the vendor after conversations with both the town facilities department, as well as our member of finance committee who had input on EV charging stations. We should, we should probably withdraw that contract, because as things stand now, we could just move forward with that, even though it's not in the best interest of the town. So...
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Do we just re-vote it, not a reconsideration, because it's probably been too long? So I move the board of selectmen not approve entering into a contract with EVSE Solutions to replace the existing charging stations at the townhouse in Kingston Library. That's it, because I don't think we need the rest, right, at this time?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Sorry, guys, you got to sit. Sorry, guys, you got to sit through all that.
Thanks for your presence.
Yes, and we are still working to find solutions, so, work in progress. And the facilities manager and assistant have been awesome, I'm so proud. And Melissa, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And you weren't here last time, so I'll say it again, the signage on the front of the building looks wonderful.
Yes, it does.
I did talk about it, but you weren't here, and since you're here, I'll take the opportunity to thank you for a very, what I imagine was a very scary installation process, but I'm glad everybody made it, and the sign is beautiful, so, thank you for that.
Exactly. The next item, the execute contract, we're not doing that.
Not, not that that's a concern.
No, no, no.
We're still working on negotiations, I don't want anyone to have a panic attack.
We're not doing it tonight.
We're, yeah, we're not moving.
We're still finalizing details, so...
Yes, exactly.
There's a sense it will not be discussed, it just draws a lot of questions, what that means.
Good point, good point. All right, update on DPW MOU, there's nothing new. I told you, I met with the Water Department last week, and that went well. So, we just need to do a joint meeting with Water, Highway, Sewer, maybe Police and Fire.
So, two weeks?
What?
So, in two weeks?
We have not scheduled anything.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 but what we'll want to do is schedule a meeting with everybody to then hash out any of the details.
Oh, like you with them, or all of us?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean...
Do we have a timeframe on that process? We don't have one yet.
No, so Water just looked at the MOU, they didn't see any issues.
Can we just invite them to the next meeting, and if they can come, then we can just bang it out and be done with it?
We can.
I think we should, to solidify it. I think it's been, like, you know, my concern, I think it's been a bit, and I think it's time we move forward at the rate we can.
I don't want to rush anything, but I think it would... Snow season's around the corner, so I'd like to solidify what we're doing, and if anything, you know... Yes. New Hampshire and Maine just got, what, a foot of snow today, so... Yeah.
All right, any, I don't think we have any meeting minutes. Or Town Administrator Report, you don't have anything?
Nothing. Oh, thank you. Nothing of, of, I mean, I kind of keep you guys up to date in real time. Well, the only thing I'll mention is, is that, you know, we've been, we've been puttering around with some, some numbers for a possible budget moving forward. You know, it's, it's there, it's going to be a challenging year, or whatever, no matter how you, how you look at it. And that's probably the biggest thing right at the moment. There's a series of small things that, that, you know, I've been in contact with you folks on, or whatever, that it's just, you know, that you kind of take it day by day and come from there, so...
All right. Selectmen comments? Kim, I'll let you go first.
What? I'm good, I'm all set.
Missy? Dawn?
I got a long thing, so I'll have to wait.
Careful, he'll just adjourn.
Carl, anything for me?
No comments.
All right. Next regular meeting is December 16th, 2025.
No meeting next week?
No meeting next week.
No meetings at all, no executive or anything?
Well, not yet.
Not yet.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
And move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Missy, aye.
What?
Why are we roll-calling, aye?
Aye. Just aye.
Are we a 5-0 on the journey?
What?
No, I'm a 4-01.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm 4-1.
6:57 p.m.
I don't support your adjournment. Thanks, everyone.